Kimball caller meeting order, if everybody's standing we're gonna say the pledge allegiance and all of the events is gonna lead to some prayer.
This year messed up.
Okay, clerk if you'll do the roll call for us.
County Board of Alderney Board of Alderney, roll call for the special nation of Mayor and Board of Alderney today, the day 26, 2020. Art Bets?
Present.
Art DuRae?
Present.
Art Gardner?
Here.
Art McCoy?
Present.
Art Probst?
Present.
Mayor Lefty, Show, Foreman, Board of Alderney, President.
Okay, all right, we have one item on our agenda today in this board discussion and some kind of vote on political candidates being required to strictly adhere to the existing ordinance related to political signage within the city limits of a day. And that being said, that we are in session, part A of the agenda item is public comments. If there's public comment, and then after that we'll have more discussion, we'll probably not take public comment at that point, and council will discuss and at that point decide on which way to go. So, any public comment?
I say move to, move into the public comment section.
Pardon?
Don't we have to move to the public comments?
No, this isn't an ordinance where you have to have actual...
Good deal.
This is just, we open, this is just a, you know, open to the public if they want to make a comment at this point. Okay. So, once we start into the deliberation or talk amongst council, we, we're gonna try not to, unless it's one of the candidates have a question as far as some things, we'll, we'll discuss it that way. Okay? All right, so, if nobody has any comments, we'll move to, okay. Mr. Angworth?
Oh, Ray Reddick. Uh, I'm concerned that this issue has come up since the last election, which was in the previous administration, and it kinda got out of hand with violations of what we have in the code. Currently, we have a number of different violations, despite the fact that this board has talked about this particular ordinance on more than one occasion in the past four years, and this board has made an effort to bring things into compliance. At this particular time, we do have a number of places that are being violated. Also, that a couple of record board meetings ago, the mayor reminded all the candidates as far as locating the signs, that you've got to put them a certain place or that someone would come around and pick them up. The location placement is one issue. The other issue has been violated too, where the minimum size of the town, according to the ordinance, is 16 square feet. Now, there's a number of signs that don't even come close to that, because there's a number of signs that do violate. And I understand that some of those signs may have come from the previous campaign, that that candidate may have ran then too, where they, they kept signing with it. But as far as caller vote, I think the board has only one choice, I don't believe you need to vote on anything. You need to recognize that the ordinance is being violated, and because it's being violated, to have candidates initially self-police themselves and bring their situation back into compliance. That's all, when you ran for office and knew what the requirements were, you've reminded a couple times, maybe four, five times in the last four years, if they're going on for office, then the political sign issue has, has got to be taken care of. Now, based on last year's, on our last four years campaigning, it got out of hand then. It's getting out of hand now, not nearer what it brought the board, it's still out of hand. Once you decide that you're gonna just waive it or whatever, if that's your choice, then it's gonna get further out of hand later in the year, because they give. To me, it's a matter of public trust, if you're gonna run for public office, any of you are gonna run for public office, and you know what the codes are, which you should know, and you violate, then I kinda question why you're doing that and running for public office. It's a public trust. Of course, this being, I guess, brought together because of another issue being the large billboard sign, that was, you know, extremely old, 16 foot. My view as a citizen is, let's get this thing to compliance with everything. That seems to be our only choice.
Okay.
If you vote to waive it, if you, if you vote to amend it, that's a process, it's gonna take a while. You gotta get approval from the planning commission, the board adjustment may get in the need that, the zoning administrator, and it's a long deal, it doesn't deal with the present problem, it may deal with it for the future, but not now. So, I'm suggesting to you to consider just announcing to all the candidates.
Okay.
Self-police.
All right, all right, thank you.
Get it back into compliance.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Nobody else, we're gonna, I guess, turn it over to the board, and we'll discuss that, and we'll go from there. So, from this point, we won't have public comment unless it's a candidate that has a question about, you know, as far as placement, unclear on that. I will say that everybody, you know, we all have people that come in and, you know, pick up signs personally from us, and they go set them out, and we, you know, we tell them where to put them, but they really don't understand, and I know, I was walking around District 1 this past week, and I moved, actually moved some of my signs that were, were in violation as far as where they were placed, I had somebody that picked them up from me and went and put them out, and I did move those when I'd come across them. So, that being said, I know the other people dealing with the same thing, some of the other candidates that are here, if you see, you know, and those places are public right of ways. You know, now, one thing that, regardless of if we talk about the sign and the size of the sign, one of the things that you can't do, and this is state law, is put signs up on public right of ways. That is state law, we can't override that. I mean, we can't, if we, if tonight the board says we're gonna override everything like they did before, and y'all saw signs all over Riverfront, all over up and down, over the road and everything else, that's public right of ways. We can't override that. That's my opinion, that's what I think is law. If the board wants to address, I'm good. I think the sign, the billboard that Ray alluded to a while ago, I didn't buy that sign, I didn't put it up, it was bought by a supporter of mine who put it up. I didn't have any money in that, so, it's okay with me if that's the thing that, that the council wants to do, I mean, as far as, but however, if it's out of compliance, a sign's out of compliance, we're not gonna get into the, well, it's a foot over, it's a hundred foot over, whatever, if it's out of compliance, out of compliance. I agree with you, Ray, either abide by it or else waive it, and I, I agree with you completely.
Could I ask a question?
Okay.
I'm not a candidate.
Okay.
All right, I keep up the land between the sidewalk and the road, is that not a place I can put a sign? I'm just asking.
Okay, and Ms. Corrine, that's a good question. The, the property between the sidewalk and the street is a public right of way. They're not supposed to be between there. However, now, I think there's some debate on who actually owns it, but it's a public right of way. However, ordinance says, our, our ordinance says that whoever owns the property adjacent to that, like on where you live.
Yes.
You have the responsibility to maintain and upkeep that spot, whether it's weed eating your sidewalk, or weed eating your curb, that's a choice that the landowner, that's their responsibility, it's not the town's, because you can imagine if the town of people we'd have to hire to come edge your curb and gutter and edge your sidewalks, I mean, that, we would, we'd have to hire a bunch of people to, to keep that up, for sure. So, it's really the property, it's the, it's the, it's the responsibility of the landowner, wherever that's adjacent to, that you have that, you know, you're supposed to maintain there and keep it clean of trash and so forth, there's some other things in there you gotta do, so.
Know it but no sign.
Pardon?
Know it but no sign.
Right, you're not, not between, it's, it's considered a public right of way, and yeah, it's, and they, they identify it as that. And on the highway, now, I do wanna say on the highway itself, if you want to look for what is considered the right of way, we were told, I talked to DOT about this, and they said a good rule of thumb is wherever, if you see a power line, that's probably a good, pretty good indication of where that right of way is. Yes, ma'am?
What about like coming around like a murray? There, like there's a sidewalk over there, and we're not having one.
Right. You know, that's, yeah, that's, that would be, yeah, I agree, I see what you're saying, there's no sidewalk to designate that. Now, one of the things you can look at, Ms. Parnell, is if there's drains there, like for example, like in Orchard where there's, you know, everybody has the little drains there, they really need to be behind that drain because that's public through there, really, so. And again, we all have probably signs, it's, somebody's come into my house and got a sign, and they put them right there on the street or whatever, and I try to, when I go by and see them, I try to move them, so. And that's why, you know, everybody, and that's why you're here tonight, and why we invited everybody here, so everybody know, we all be on the same page.
And the corner of South Spruce and John Dale Drive.
Corner of South Spruce and John Dale Drive, I'm trying to picture, well, have I got one out that's not where it's supposed to be?
I'm just asking, what about that here right there? It's south.
I'd have to see if this, if this, if it's not behind a sidewalk, if there's no sidewalk, then...
You were just there, Sarah, and wanted to see it.
Mayor, I can't remember, but I'll go look at it, after I leave here tonight, I will, but thank you for, for bringing that up, thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, anybody else got a question?
I think one of the major violations that we're seeing right now is the size violation. Um, you know, 16, it's, it's laid out very specifically what the sign can be, the size of the sign, I don't think we can pick and choose what part of the ordinance we're gonna follow and what we're gonna waive, and so, the size is one of the great issues that we have right now.
I've got, I've got, the other issue is, I came and notified some candidates, as you read the ordinance, one part of it didn't cover was the 60 day prior to the election, and we have many violations on those signs that people put out prior to the election. That's why I wanna remind you of the 60 day, because that was definitely violated by candidates, so, nobody did anything, I told somebody about it, but nobody did anything about it, okay? That's up the books.
Well, I mean, do y'all wanna leave, do y'all wanna leave the public in it?
Yeah, let them, I say let them talk, because they're thinking of things as we talk.
As Mayor, Chris King, the question I have is, we talk about violations, but if the ordinance doesn't include a, what are the reprimands for a violation? Is it just my sign gets to stay up to be seen until y'all keep telling me to take it down, and then I take it down, and good luck, or is there an actual reprimand or consequence? Without consequences, ordinances and laws don't matter.
Yes, they're removed.
Well, in the, in the ordinance...
Something in there?
Well, in the ordinance that we have, there is a fee schedule, and there are two that I think pertain to this. You have posting of signs on public property is a $100 fine.
Right.
And planning and zoning general violation, which is what I believe that the size falls under, is a $500 violation.
And then my other input would be, for the roads that don't have sidewalks, can we maybe add some things to the ordinance to say, hey, if it doesn't have a sidewalk, your sign has to be this many feet off the street, and then, at some point, the ordinance does have to speak about whether somebody picks up a sign from you or not be responsible for your face, your name, and where it's being put, and we need to police our own, even if people are picking them up from us.
That's, that's a good, that's a good point, that's a good point.
We've been up here, I've talked to them about it, I've been up here several times talking with them about it, and that's one of the things that we definitely are gonna look at in the, in the near, near, after this election. You can't change anything at this point, you know, in that ordinance, so, it will be looked at for the future as soon as possible, because it needs to be fines involved, like we said, we've got, it needs to be cleared, and, and there's certain other things that need to be looked at in that ordinance, to make it clear for the people, if it needs to be done, so we need to do it.
And, and look, it's, there's some common sense stuff too to use in it, for example, if I, if I have, or, let's say, for example, Altona Probst has a supporter come say, hey, look, I've got 50 rent houses in town, I'm, I'm on 50 houses, I mean, signs, I'm gonna go put them up, and you got 25 of them out of compliance, should he be responsible, pay 25 fines for that one sign? I think it should be some type of system where you go and tell him, hey, look, these are in viol, you know, violation, you got so long to do them, but then you get, you, look, you get, then you get some people who might be a opponent going to move your signs back where they are in violation, so you, you know, it's just, it's just a thing that you really gotta pay attention to, and we really need to use some common sense with, and, as we go forward with this, but it's, even, you know, I, I don't, until the bill, I'm gonna be honest, till the billboard went up, there was no outcry, I think the billboard kinda was an outcry. Again, this was a, a personal idea. I know in the past, that even the last election, even for, and I, I had a good friend of mine who was running for office, had a big sign banner flowing and a Sky Tracker up on a, right there on the highway, there was no public outcry. But now it's a public outcry, and somebody else will raise your hand first.
Well, wait, in response to that though, this is gonna come across badly, and I don't mean for it to, there should not have to be a public outcry for the enforcers in this town to enforce the codes and laws that exist. We should not have to be here. We should not have had to wait until there was public outcry. Candidates who are running for office, who are saying, please vote for me, because I want to be a part of making and enforcing laws of your town, should not be violating ordinances. And people who are already doing the job, who are already elected and receiving taxpayer funds by way of payroll, should not have to have public outcry in order to enforce the laws that are already on the books. So, I agree with you, the public outcry did actually come when the billboard went up, but we should have never gotten to this point, there should not be one sign that's out of compliance, because candidates should be responsible for themselves, and the people who are already charged with the enforcing of the ordinances that are on the books should have already been policing it. And, like I said, I preface that by saying it's gonna come out wrong, but that is just my opinion, and I, we should not be here, we should not be having to have this meeting whatsoever.
I agree, I agree with you.
Are there too big, some of the signs that are out are too big to begin with?
Absolutely, that's what we're saying, Ms. Reveso.
That was noted prior to this big sign.
That sign, I think there are many signs.
I agree with you wholeheartedly, absolutely agree with you wholeheartedly.
And it goes across, and it goes across all the candidates.
Yes, absolutely.
Ain't nobody hardly exempt out of this thing.
Basically, I think we let it slide, or, I didn't, I reported it because it's part of my job to report the fact that it was up 60 days prior to, it was too big, that's all I could do, I can't enforce it, all I could do was tell you about it, and then somebody's gotta do it, but it didn't happen until that bigger sign went up, and then all kinds of people got to call it me.
Mr. King, he, Mr. King had his hand raised up before some...
My name is George King, I'm not a resident of Black Valley, I live in Manhattan, but I'm here representing the big sign. So, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Virgil Jackson, who owns, who accessed and controlled that sign, he has fought and underbreathed access to that sign for the next 150 years, has asked me to speak to this behalf. He's in Texas, he's out of town at the moment, and I apologize for my voice, I spent all day yesterday building a wheelchair ramp for this April bedroom, and Monday I was in the doctor's office, it's bad for us, so, I haven't gotten over it yet, and all the hard day yesterday, so I kinda didn't, I apologize for that. I made some speaking points, talking points, just in case I get nervous and forget something, y'all just bear with me, I'll redo it. I made a copy for the aldermen in Alderman, in case they forget anything that I mentioned you'd like to look over. First of all, this all started because of, my understanding anyway, there were at least three Facebook, you called it, Facebook Live video, that were posted by an individual who had a business here in Black Valley, who said about the sign being there supposed to get business, and he thought it might be an impact and get business, because one of the kids that posted on the sign had a, the part owner of the building located in another part of Black Valley, that he felt it was putting in competition. He was wanting that individual picture of him getting business, he was offended by it. So, my first part, part A says, write Mr. Jackson Jr. to use the billboard sign. The billboard sign he questioned located on property, the old racetrack or race track gas station property, previously owned by Mr. Virgil Jackson Jr. Mr. Virgil Jackson bought the property specifically for the use of the existing billboard sign. He didn't buy that gas station, put in a gas station, he didn't buy it for store location, he wanted it for the billboard, that's the only reason he bought that. He wouldn't pay $60,000 just for the billboard sign, but he bought the whole property, and all he wanted was the...
He has a...
He has an $800 hotel, that's an old owner, that's not something else. That hotel property weighs hundreds of thousands of dollars of tax revenue, that, that, that hotel property is critical to my debt, is it not, Mr. Mayor?
Pardon?
The revenue, the tax revenue that comes from sweet springs into the kind of like that is critical to the account.
Well, all, all of our tax revenues are critical, I mean, but, but...
Mr. Stevens, I mispronounced his last name, so I'll say it, owner of the auto repair station, Mr. Racetrack, was interested in purchasing the property from Mr. Jackson for the purpose of expanding his auto repair business. He aggressively pursued Mr. Jackson to sell him the gas station property. Mr. Jackson took it to settle that property for years, he wanted it, he had no interest in using it, all he wanted was the billboard. Mr. Virgil, Mr. Virgil Jackson agreed to sell the gas station to Mr. Stevens, again, I can't pronounce his last name, wanted sufficient conditions that Mr. Jackson and his heirs retain full underbreasted unrestricted use and access to a billboard sign for the 100, 120. That is in the sale contract, where it was sold, Mr. Jackson and Mr. Stevens. And I have a copy of that, if anybody would like it, the copies run out, I'll give them a copy to the mayor of the Board of Alderney. No condition for inclined or inferred in the legal bill or shell as to how the billboard sign might be used, right? Mr. Jackson has exclusive underbreached license to that billboard, and any, anybody posting, any information up here, anybody maintaining the sign, that is his exclusive underbreached access to that billboard sign. I've, I've already provided a, a copy of the bill of sale and questions to the Board of Alderney, and to the rees, and the tax returns. In the Facebook post, which he claims, Stevens claims exclusive control of the sign and access to the property.
Here we go.
That has no label or criminal measure, so if he had gotten out there and obstructed those signs, people that were putting the signs up the other day, that would have been a criminal violation.
Is that a civil case?
It would have been civil and criminal if they...
It's a civil case, right, so it needs a judgment from a judge.
No, it is, it is contract or...
I would, I would, I would, if you would, I mean, you know, what I've read, I mean, I don't wanna get into that, I, I think, we'll let, we'll let...
I'm gonna let, that's...
Okay, I, I think what people will need to know is, what is, I mean, I think what I'm, what's, what I'm reading is, what Virgil...
That's why I'm here.
I'm just giving the background, the seller's property.
Wait, but we're not talking about that sign, which I'd like to clarify, is not a billboard, it is not in any way or capacity now or ever a billboard, and that was a sign that we allowed him to put up during the construction time where people were having difficulty finding the hotel.
That sign has been here since the racetrack was here, so that is yours.
But it wasn't a billboard then, it was a gas advertisement, advertisement sign. We're here discussing political signage, I do, wait a minute, I do believe that we need to discuss that sign, but I don't believe that this is the time and the place to do that, as far as what is grandfathered in and what can be done for the future, because that is a complete and separate issue from what we're talking about now. What we're talking about now is political signage that exceeds the sign requirement.
And I'll make a statement, I wanna make one statement other than that, because Jay, Jay and Bill and I think, we knew this would probably come up because of what they're placing, but as I'm gonna say, that's why we deterred that conversation tonight, and only put one thing on the agenda that I requested, and the other alderman requested, was the political signing, not signs, billboards, or off-site, or on-site signing. So, tonight, that's all we want to discuss, so in my opinion, just like the other aldermen, Mary Craft said, I think that's what we need to stay on task.
Well, I would not measure all those political signs that I've seen in the city of Black Valley, and I'll let you know, 16 square feet, most of the signs up are 32 feet. That includes, Art Gardner's signs, they're 32 feet.
That's what we're here about.
Okay, Chris, go ahead.
So, there's a lot of violations out there, we're talking about political signs, and those two signs on that billboard are politically, they're political signs.
I agree, I agree with you, I agree.
They don't fall into this ordinance.
They don't fall into this ordinance.
Hold on, hold on a minute, let me, let me, I did wanna address what, Chris, I did wanna address, Chris, what you said, it's a temporary political sign, nobody else, everybody else has got political signs, it's all through town, nobody brought signs to the council to get approval, so just like those signs, they didn't come, come to the board, none of the others did either. I mean, you did, I mean, nobody else brought, I think, I mean, a...
Well, I'll say, I wanna say too, and we talked about it, Mary Craft and I talked about it, Chris, before we do anything else, Mary Craft, he really, and I have to believe, he didn't know it was coming, it was on his own.
No, I, I knew it was going, I, after it was done.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, it was done, he...
An actuality, and I'm gonna go back to one other statement before we go into further, and that's why I think we need to cut this thing off. This, this piece of steel that's going up is not a billboard, it is a sign, as always has been a sign, no different than that sprint mark sign out there, that was in place for racetrack. You cannot qualify that as a billboard if it was a sign, so that's, that's why we need to cut this thing completely off and go to what we're here for, and that's the political sign, if you make a, you know, deal with that.
Again, I, I do...
Call 18, Chapman, as it pertains to posting of campaign signs under election officials...
Two, hey, hold on a minute, I'm gonna give two more minutes to Mr. King, and then, then I'll, I'll listen to that, please, 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 please.
The sign is erected by a private citizen, and is not by any person running for office, it is an expression of his free speech rights, and the billboard is not located on any highway right of way, it is on private property, it is not on publicly owned property, it is not placed on any public utility park or, that is on the 23.
It is not a billboard, it was never designated a billboard.
I'm not using the term.
I know, I know what you're doing, and I'm correcting it, it is not now, nor has it ever been a billboard, so that law is thrown out the window.
Okay, Ms. Doray and everybody, please, if somebody's speaking, let those people finish, and don't talk over them, I'm asking you not to do that, okay? So, Mr. King, you done?
Now, Mr. Jackson supports all, he, he literally supports all of the individuals running for police, the face of, uh, chief of police, he, he supports, and every one of those candidates, he believes, every one of those are finding divisions, and, and he chose, he chose an individual he thought would be most qualified for the position of mayor, and he, he had two sides, one side he wanted to put something up there, during the time that there was no signage up there because of regret in the name of the hotel.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Now, I think that we need to just go ahead and limit it to what the council wants to, it don't matter, I'm telling you, it don't matter to me. I mean, well, but hey, now, if, now, I would just say, now, I just wanna say this, if, that one, everyone that is out of violation is coming down as well. Every, everyone that's out of compliance, if it's over 16 square foot, come down, and we'll, that's what, now, that's where we're at, and I don't have a problem with that. I'm good with it, y'all, I, like I said, I think, I'm, it don't cost me a dime to have that one taken down. It, that's right, it don't, it's an in-kind contribution, the fact that, but anyway, I'm gonna handle that, but...
Let's roll.
We need, we need to set up a time and a procedure of how long we're gonna allow it now, of when they gotta come down, but we gotta be realistic because of the number of signs out there, and when they're gonna come down, and if they show back up, who's gonna pick them up? Because, you know, we need to say whether either the current police chief's gonna pick them up and make that determination, or whether, or somebody else does, but they will be picked up if they're on public property or if they're out of compliance, they will be picked up if that's what the council wants to, and I've got no problem with that. I'm good.
Good.
Okay.
Can we say legal, go to legal, and if we have an ordinance in place, at this point, there's really no option, really, George, in your opinion? I mean, we can't... I mean, we can't amend it, we can't do anything, and it's pretty much cut and dry.
That's why we got it.
You can wave it.
Just in point, and that's, and that means that those four bays, those...
It takes a process.
Two meetings, even, in force, if it were just election.
I so moved that every sign that's out of compliance be picked up.
And timeframe, I think we need to decide the timeframe, give us a reasonable timeframe.
A week, a week will be reasonable.
You know, we, we allow three days after the political campaign, after the end of the election, to get them up, uh, I mean, this, and I say we need to involve them in that, because of what you're hearing.
Get after that week time.
Is till the end of the weekend suitable?
Monday morning, 8 o'clock, police department in charge of patrolling it.
Can I say something?
Please, sir.
Why put this man, he's running for election, too, why can't the street department pick these signs up, or the current chief will not be involved, oh, it's gonna happen, he's the chief, he picked up the wrong sign, why can't our street department pick the wrong sign?
I think, I think, that's right, Mary Craft, I think we should not involve them.
I agree with that.
I agree with you, Frank.
Who's the street department under the direction of? Who's gonna pick up the rest of the signs?
Can I say something?
Yeah, Jay, go ahead.
Why can't these, everybody in this room is adults, why can't we all just be adults, go pick up your signs, it's out of...
That's what I said.
It can be done with it.
Be done with it.
This is not sensitive enough to be lying.
Amen.
I'm just saying, this is the thing about it, is if they don't, then somebody's got to, is what I'm saying. So, yes, we've asked, and Mary Craft asked them, if you would, just pick them up yourself and be done with it, or place them where they're supposed to be placed, and be done with it, but if they don't, somebody's gotta do it.
I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take one more comment from the public, and then we're gonna, if a candidate has a question, Ms. Parnell, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, now, okay, we're saying that is not a billboard. If it were considered a billboard, would it not be accurate that Mr. Jackson was in violation of the billboard ordinance for changing it without something else?
That, that's your right, that's your right.
We're gonna have to defer to council on that, we'll have to answer that at a later meeting. No, I know, we'll have to...
Is there no requirement that it's something they need to know that they would be in violation of the law also?
And that's something that, that either, either Mr. Jackson, or, or Steve, Mr. Trehealy, he's here, that they would have to work out themselves with whatever, but, uh, we, I think we've addressed it tonight, so I don't know what else we need to talk about, other than, all right, Martha, okay?
Okay, it's my understanding that Mr. Jackson is leasing said billboard, or sign, I'm gonna say sign, that he's leasing that. What I wanna know is, in that lease, how, what is the language of that lease? Because if he's leasing it, then he should be able to put up, I mean, if there's nothing in that lease that says you can't put a political sign, you can't put anything of personal interest, or anything like that, then...
We, we, I think we, I think we've addressed, it is politically, it is political, and it's over, it is over the, over the stated amount. And really, let's, let's wrap this up, y'all, with this, I think what we need to do is, really, I wanna limit our conversation now to any candidates that might have a question about, you know, where you can put it, outside city limits?
You made a motion.
I mean, if you wanna, if any of the candidates wanna know where the city limits are, you know, I'd be glad, I've got, I've got a city limits map in, in my office, you can come by and take a look at that, you're welcome to do that, I'll show you the city limits. Okay?
Make sure everybody's correct, sign on, pass the sidewalk, if you can put a ticket for it.
And, right, on the other side, or behind, or behind a drainage, if you see a drainage easement through there, you can kinda tell where that drainage runs, it would need to be kinda to that, or equal to it, or behind it, I would say, yeah.
I think the right of way on the curb, 15 foot, is it wrong?
And, and that's a good...
And potentially tax assessment off the hill too. You do, you have to take care of property 15 foot, I think is the right way.
I, I think that's a good point, and that's something we need to address when we do look at the ordinance again, it's addressing, if it's not, if it's not a sidewalk there to address it, or it's not a, the thing, you know, how many feet, and where do you go from, from the edge of the road, or do you from the center of the road, or so forth, whatever, but, it's not, we, we, I'm just, we're just gonna talk with, with candidates.
Other people talk.
No, I'm just talking, he's a candidate, well, he wasn't, but...
No, he's not.
Okay, all right, go ahead, you got, you got, go ahead.
You're talking all over me, and that's just wrong.
Okay, go ahead, Kazan.
I wanna know, if, if that alderman came to you, and made you aware, and made the rest of the aldermen aware that the signs were going up first too soon, then we noticed signs of all different sizes were going up, why didn't we address it then? Y'all already had gumbo. Why didn't we address the signs were out of compliance then, and we wouldn't be here with small meeting the largest, and sign as big as the flag and reds were hanging up there, if we didn't?
And that's the problem, ain't it, that's it.
Because we didn't address it when it first came up.
Okay, okay.
Well, isn't that sign supposed to have a disclaimer on it, too, showing who donated that sign?
I don't, I can't answer that.
It is, well, it's footage, nobody came before the alderman to get an approval on that, and to best of my knowledge, there was no permit at all.
Well, and there's, there's, none of the political signs have that either, so every one of those out of compliance as well.
According to what I read, it's supposed to have a disclaimer on it.
When Lamar signs changes their signs for customers, they don't come to get approval from the board?
We got one Lamar sign...
Lamar's a billboard company.
Huh?
Lamar's a billboard company.
Well, they got one in city limits. All right, that's, anything from the candidates before we, we try to, you know, finish it up, anything else from the candidates? Cause we, that's, really, that's, that's, all right, Alderman Probst, you got, what's your, I think, Alderman McCoy has a, a brief, go ahead. Please, whoever's talking, I can't, I can't hear, please.
A fellow hurts might say you couldn't put a sign outside the city limits.
Oh, no, you can.
Pardon?
You can. He was asking if he could put a sign outside the city limits?
You just, you just need to check what the laws are for the police year, or the parish, and I don't know what those are. I don't know what those are, but, I mean, you, I would, I would check with what their rules and regulations are, but I, you know, if it's outside that, it's out of our jurisdiction, for sure, so, anyway, a motion was made, but, could you repeat that again, Alderman McCoy? Every sign that's out of compliance needs to be moved, changed, cut down, whatever, within a week. A week, okay, so today is Wednesday? Now, but before we do that, the responsibility of picking it up, it's, it's not on the candidate, it's gonna be on... It's for that first week, it's on the candidate. Candidate, 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 but I would, I would put it as far as Friday, depending, I mean, you know, people's work schedules and so forth, I mean, it's, I would just put next Friday, that by next Friday, they all need to be, uh, picked up. And if they're not picked up by then, Friday evening, we'll, we'll send a crew around, if that's what the council wants me to do, we'll send someone to pick them up.
I mean, you're, you're giving labor right now by establishing a longer and longer timeframe. 10 days in this campaign is a pretty long time.
Okay, right, all right, next Wednesday, is that okay? I mean, Wednesday? Okay, we do Wednesday.
You allow people who are non-citizens today to speak for a lifetime. You know, you respect Mr. King, but he's protecting his man, but, uh, the, the deal is, you've got an ordinance, you've got, in that ordinance, the way you're enforcing, you've got, you've got what your criminal penalties are, then, or the other penalties are, for doing it, just follow that ordinance, and, 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 you know, I think it's unreasonable for you to look at next Friday, when you could say next month.
Especially, you know, we take an hour and a half to look at it.
You know, it's a simple thing.
Mr. Mayor, there's a motion on the floor.
That's right.
We don't have a second yet.
We don't.
We need to get the motion said.
Okay.
We need a second, and both of them.
We don't even have a sec yet.
Well, I mean, like I said, I requested, whenever I didn't make a motion on it, I still say, we can get them up after three days after election, we ought to be able to get them up within, by the end of the weekend, to give everybody a chance to get them up, that's reasonable, I think that's more than reasonable.
Well, I still don't know, for example, and I'm just using that for example, I don't know, people who put it up, I don't know what their schedules are, I think a week is sufficient, I think, Alderman McCoy said a week, Alderman McCoy, you said a week, to get them up? That's by next Wednesday, by next Wednesday? It's done, it's done by then. All right, second, motion made, uh, for them to pick up all signs out of compliance, okay, and they would be picked up by next Wednesday, and second by Mr. Probst.
And is there, who's gonna be authorized to pick up any signs still, like you?
After Wednesday, the street department, and, and that what we're saying?
Put the street department on the board?
Thank you, need a definite person to be responsible for giving the street department the information, because you can't expect everybody in the street department to go out there on their own and start managing, picking up signs.
I think this is ridiculous. Pick up your signs, go out there and pick up your signs, do the right thing, be a good public citizen, go pick up your signs, don't task this town with having to do it. And if they do, fine them, you've got a fine schedule, don't send somebody else out, taking them away from a job that they are needed to do in this town, to do real work, to go pick up a sign, send them a bill and be done with it.
Ms. Doray, we're just addressing those that don't, won't do it, we're saying...
Well, I guess what she's saying really is, though, and we're fine after that.
I get it, I get it, I get it.
They're not picked up, they're fine.
Now, next Wednesday, next Wednesday, okay, all right.
That's the easiest, I mean, that really is the easiest way to not have to put anybody in charge.
Well, Clark wanted, go ahead.
So, uh, the motion, the board, the board motion offered by Alderman, or executive Alderman Croft, uh, for political candidates to be required to strictly adhere to the existing ordinance related to political signing within the city limits of the day, no later than Wednesday, March 4th, 2021.
See it, and at that point, it goes into whatever the ordinance says happens after that.
That's right, and then we got fines.
That's it.
Fines in the ordinance already, pre-planned for this.
That's how it's supposed to be handled, in my opinion.
All right, now, you gonna do it per sign, or per violation, per sign, on the, on the, if you're gonna do that?
Per sign.
Whatever that ordinance says.
Huh?
Have to look at the ordinance.
Each sign is an individual entity, is per sign.
I'm just, all I'm saying is, I mean, for, not only those outside of size, but if somebody's just on a public right of way, and they've got four signs that's on a public right of way...
It's all in that one ordinance, so it's consistency.
We just have to ask, who's gonna enforce that, see, how the marshal can?
We, what we just need to do, because, again, I think we should have some kinda warning, if you have a sign that you thinks on that, there should be a warning, if it's not picked up, then do that, that's just common sense, because, again, we're gonna have supporters call and get, get signs.
This is your warning.
But, anyway.
Here's your warning.
I'm talking about a yard sign that might be questionable, okay? That's what I'm talking about, don't, do you think it's fair to go charge somebody $500 because there's a yard sign that's maybe questionable? I mean, who's gonna make that call? I think we need to have some common sense on it.
The right of way, yeah, questionable.
Yeah.
It is, I mean, that's a questionable, in a lot of ways.
Okay, all right, roll call, you wanna do the vote?
That's what we'll work on with that ordinance, when we rewrite it.
Alderman Bedd, yes.
Yes.
Alderman Doray?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Gardner?
Yes.
Yes.